We are gonna start off with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can I get a motion without the agenda?
So move.
Second. First and second, all those in favor? Um, so a couple things before we approve the consent agenda. Cottonwood went to McDonald's for McTeacher Night. Brought in a hefty chunk of nine hundred forty-seven dollars and six cents, so way to go, Cottonwood. That was all, like, all staff volunteered, or?
All our staff were there, yeah, we had bedded and stuff.
Awesome.
All of us here, yeah, no problem.
Awesome, it's always fun to see the teacher's face in the grocery store, but coming out from McDonald's window is another thing. Um, also, we had a donation from the Kansas Contractors Association for two thousand dollars to use in the construction trades program, so thank you to that association. And then, if you weren't aware, the Rotary Club donated six hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, matched by SOS, or serving our students group. And then the food service people came together and volunteered their time to make Thanksgiving dinners for families in our community. So they were able to feed a hundred and fifty meals for a total of about thirty-seven families. So, thank you to the Rotary and SOS for those donated funds, and then to the time donated by the staff of the food service to feed our families.
Especially James McIntyre, he coordinated all that, he's our friend, used to be here, did amazing job with us.
Awesome.
Kudos to him.
Alright, that is all I had to touch on for consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
Second, first and second, all those in favor? Awesome. Alright, next up, we are going to recognize some amazing employees of our district. First up is Melissa Sanders. Melissa has been nominated by her peers or members of the public for her exemplary work. She takes care of level three kids' after-school activities. She is kind, sweet, and gentle, and is always there for the kids, which means a lot to me since my student is in her class. So, thank you so much, Melissa. You can choose a bag or a cup.
Add to the collection.
Perfect, same, that would be my answer too. Congratulations, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
I know, it doesn't last very long. Cheese.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Deb Hannif from Sunflower. Deb has been nominated by her peers or members of the public for her exemplary work. This comes from a do- um, a parent. My daughter has always struggled in math. She's said many times that she hates math, but recently she said she's enjoying math this year. This might seem like a small thing, but it's huge for her. She comes home with less anxiety and more confidence this semester. Mrs. Hannif teaches in a way that my student understands with a calm energy that helps her anxious student. So, thank you for all that you do.
Same thing.
Same. That's a winner of an item, I'm telling ya. Thank you so much.
Oh, okay.
I'll go for a second, the light will sweep us. Thank you. We're full of goodness tonight in recognizing people and their service to our district. And so we're just gonna keep on moving. And, tonight is the last night for three of our board members. They will be cycling out, and we will receive new board members in January. So we wanted to take a moment to thank them for their years of service. Kelly Frankie, if you don't know, has been with the district and on this board for twenty-two years. I can't think of, um, any better way to show dedication than to stick through public service for twenty-two years. It's not easy, and so I, I personally thank you. She's been a wealth of knowledge, so we wanna thank Kelly for her twenty-two years of service. And then Scott Golubski rounding out a solid eight years. Go Scott. Oh yeah, sorry, I, I, anyway, thanks. Eight years of your service, sir. Thank you for all you've done. And then Michelle, we thank you for five years of service. You are amazing, and we thank you for being here and serving our students. Alright, are you ready?
I'll take it.
Okay, four things from the high school on my side. First of all, our choir concert starts at seven at night, so you'll see me run out the door if the meeting hasn't quite concluded. Band will be next Wednesday at high school, so always good to see both those winning groups showing off what they've been working hard on all semester with their winter concert. Our debate squad is past the halfway point of their season, they've had several top-three finishes. I gotta share that they finished third in sweepstakes at a big awards tournament last weekend. That actually was a two-day tournament on Friday. So congratulations to them. Final exams at the high school are next week, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are really important dates. Something I found interesting, I looked through data from last year. Our highest attended days of the school year always are sixth, final place, three, and fourth, three, and spring. So, that means our students know the importance of that, what their best foot's toward. And I'm looking forward to seeing that next week. And you already alluded to the Association of General Contractors that made that two thousand dollar donation. That was not just a gift, it was recognition for the good things that our students are doing, the construction trades program. So specifically, the number of NCCER modules that they're completing is the best in our part of the state. So, it was a complete surprise when the gentleman showed up and presented us with a couple plaques and two really nice checks that are about four weeks old. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Athletically, we got Paul Stevens all wrapped up. And we'll give a shout-out to our repeating back-to-back state championship cheer squad. They won a state championship that last weekend or two weekends ago, I think, I'm gonna go all messed up, but... So, they won back-to-back now in the last four out of five years. So, we don't wanna call them a dynasty in comparison to these guys yet, but they've got it going on. And if you, if you think cheering is, is easy, show up and watch these girls practice, because Reggie and Hannah have them running, they sound like a Marine Corps. They run the hallways, and they do their chants as they're running the hallways and stuff. So, they put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, and we'll recognize them. And that's gonna be able to get our banner up, and then next week, next, next month, here for me. Wrestling is off to a breaking start. Boys won the Spring Hill tournament, girls got third this weekend. This Wednesday, we have a JV mixer over at the high school. Boys will travel to Manhattan for their tournament, and girls do the Battle of Graves at Fort Rosemont. So, there's their, we, we do, it doesn't seem like it, but in this three weeks before Christmas, we do about a third of our entire season, both basketball and wrestling. So, the kids are really, basketball started off down at Tromack, split down there. Boys came away with a win, and then we went to Baldwin, and Baldwin at the time was ranked number one. Our boys upset them. It was a tremendous game, if you had to catch it online or if you were there live. We will be playing at home this week, Tuesday and Friday, with our little tournament that we have. It's only three teams this year, we lost a team, weren't able to replace them for this year. Got to fix for next year, but they'll play Tuesday against Fort Scott and Friday against Will'sville. So, boys ain't real barking one. And then JV basketball runs to Ottawa on Wednesday and next Monday, I have fifty minutes. So, that wrap-up right before Christmas.
I wanna talk about a couple things as far as staff engagement is concerned. To kinda have some fun with Thanksgiving, we played a game with our staff called Turkey in Your Pocket. And so, teachers had to go around and ask each other if they had a turkey in their pocket, and if they did, then they could, they had to give that up. And so, just kind of a fun game, and we gave them a prize at the end, so they had a lot of fun with that. We had a staff luncheon last week that we actually ate on for two days. So that just tells you how much food that people bring in. And then tomorrow, actually, we're gonna play rock-paper-scissors. Everybody's gonna have a bell necklace, and so then they're gonna have to duel it out with rock-paper-scissors to see how many necklaces they can collect. So, just kinda doing some fun with them. And then also, this Wednesday, we have a huge night. We've got an art and STEM night at five o'clock. And then, we just were crazy and wanted to get everything done one night, I guess, because then we have our choir concert at six o'clock, and then our band concert is at seven o'clock. And so, we're getting all of those done on Wednesday night, so it should be a lot of fun.
Couple of things going on musically at Sunflower. Last week, before Thanksgiving break, Ann Barker, our music teacher, had written a grant, received a grant from Endowment for Drums, and she brought in Drum Safari into Sunflower. The kids all got to, I mean, it was amazing. At one point, you know, we had half the school in there, so roughly a hundred and eighty students, they all had instruments, and played together, and it sounded great. Shout-out to them, and then we have our fourth grade music program this Thursday. And, you know, Ann has worked with the whole specialist teams, they, she's written the program, and so it'll be exciting to see. And then, we just got back from the Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Conference, where our team presented, and shout-out to them, they rocked it. They really, truly were the highlight of the conference. All through the conference, people would come up to the team and say, "Oh my gosh, we loved what you presented." Even in the airport, they had a principal run up to them and say, "Oh, you're the team that talked about win," and to see how much they enjoyed that. Really, at the conference, the nice thing, I mean, you know, you get to hear all these other schools talk, but just the collaboration that happens when you're not having to rush back to your classroom, et cetera. Just to hear all of the ideas and everything that the teachers were generating was really inspiring. And then, we of course tried to, we couldn't take all the kids with us, so we, you know, told them we wanted to, but, you know, we couldn't. But we created a pamphlet and sent back, every day we sent back pictures, fun facts, to the students, and so that they could experience that with us.
Last week, Cottonwood picked off the holiday season with our second-grade Christmas concert, and had, did a great job, had a great turnout for that. We are fully staffed now with all of our teachers back from maternity leave, so it's good to have a full staff back again. We just are in the midst of still continuing to pilot new reading program, curriculum, and kindergarten first and second grades, and a couple teachers per grade level on that. And then, just finishing up, our winter benchmark assessments, our FastBridge assessments, showed grade growth in kindergarten first and second grade, is kind of the highlight in second grade. We went from the fall, where forty-six percent of our students were considered at no risk, that they were at grade level or above, we increased that number to fifty-nine percent in the winter. So, that was great, the growth on that. In fact, that's the highest percentage of students at the no-risk category since starting FastBridge in the last five or six years, I think. So, great growth there, and seeing continued growth across the grade level. So, good job to our teachers, and our students, and our families too.
Any other acknowledgements from the board? Okey-dokey. Um, so Kelly and I, and Matt as well, had the opportunity to go to the KASB Conference, convention down in Wichita, so, um, I guess, do you wanna shoot us with what you got?
Yeah.
This was the first time in twenty-three conventions, 'cause I was on the board for twenty-two years, but there was a year that I ponied up the money and went to convention on my own. This is the first time in twenty-three conventions that I did not go to one session. I went and, went to the district showcase, and I walked around and looked and saw the programs that the schools had brought with their students, and I spent my entire day talking to kids about what they're doing in school. So, there was everything from the Lowrider Bicycle Club, which I kid you not, means exactly what you think, except it's a bicycle. That, it was cool, um, to schools that have flower shops, basically. So they're doing flowers for teachers, they're doing flowers for weddings, they're do- like, it is, it is all hands-on-deck. We're ordering, we're doing the flowers, we're designing, we're delivering, it's, it's the whole nine yards. So Semin and Spring Hill both have programs that do that. The school, the high school at Circle has a bank in their building, so kids can make deposits. People, the general public can come in and make deposits at the bank, or withdraw money, or open accounts, like all... It is a full-fledged bank inside their building. And the kids like it because they get to get some money out to go to the ballgame, or I need to deposit my check, or I need to cash my check, whatever it is. And so, it's, you know, the kids are, are learning that side of it, you know, a little fiscal responsibility. Plus, during the summer, they get to work at the actual bank, too, so it's not just a school program. Winfield High School has a full health science pathway that has everything that you practically could wonder and worry about in the health sciences group. Derby has a outdoor classroom, and they plant milkweed. And so, everybody could walk around and get a little milkweed for their, for their butterflies. The only other thing that I have is that Foundations of Boardsmanship, which this board will be, is signed up for, is happening all across the state. And then, on January the twentieth in Topeka is Literacy Day at the Capitol, and it's sponsored by the Blueprint for Literacy Group. So, that's, that's what I have.
Thanks. I have never been, this was my first year, and so to go, I felt right back into my teacher role. And a lot of, a lot of board members who were there were previous district employees, and so it was nice to be able to talk to them and hear their districts and the things that we have in common that we find as struggles, the things that we find as wins. So, I, I did go to some of the sessions, one of them that just really kind of hit home was Superintendent Don Epps, he is in Pleasanton. If you've never looked him up on Facebook, I highly encourage you, he is stinking hilarious. He wore a sweatband for his entire presentation, it was stylish.
He also does the splits.
He does. He gave several interesting stories during his, but it was, his, his session was about building greatness within the district, and the things that he does, you know, as the superintendent to get his community, they're a smaller community, a smaller district, and so, like us declining enrollment, and how do you overcome those things, and how do you communicate with your community to get, you know, buy-in from parents, you know, to participate in the activities, and the learning, and the growth of their students, because it doesn't matter what district you're in, you're struggling with all of that. So, his was, his was my, it sticks with me, and I think about it. He said, "Chase greatness every day," that was his, like, tagline. And then when I went to the showcase, I saw several of the ones that Kelly mentioned. One that I went to was Ellsworth High School, and their, it's their student council. They have all kinds of little initiatives that they have going throughout their school. They have a shopping cart that they get items donated, like energy drinks and toothpaste, and kind of like one of those, well, they called it "Meeting Their Students Where They Need." And so, you know, if they needed in the care closet, or from the, you know, if they're having a bad day, they can get nominated by a peer or a teacher to go visit the card of, you know, Alani Energy Drinks, or whatever, just something to brighten their day. They also had little, if you've ever seen, like, the little ducks, like, not rubber ducks, but like tiny plastic ducks. They have little bags with the ducks, but all kinds of things. They had ducks and donuts, I think they went to Amazon and just bought little miniature characters. But every single character had a card to it, and so it was like, have, you know, have a... I couldn't take one, they wouldn't let me take one, so I couldn't, like a fish, you know, have a swimmingly day or something, you know, along those lines, just something to brighten, you know, the day if you are just struggling. So, they were really trying, they called them mental health minis, is what they were called. But they had hygiene products in the bathroom, microwaves in the commons, activities during school, kinda like the turkey in your pocket. They kinda did some things to get interaction between the students, having them ask questions, and then, you know, if they answered the question, they got a piece of candy. Just something to build the rapport, to build a relationship between the student body. So, that was fun to learn about. Spring Hills, FFA, kinda like the, the flower shop has a bake, a pop-up baking, like farm stand. They make amazing sourdough, it was delicious. So, it's just, honestly, it's fun to get to walk around and see the kids being so passionate about their endeavors in their school, and the things that make them tick. So, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to, to go and, and get to, to learn from them, so, yeah. Alright, moving right along, was there anything you had to add? Sorry.
No, I mean, the high school, the showcase, it wasn't just high school elementary through, I mean, those were good. I went to some, some boring sessions, I went to legal stuff and listened to attorneys talk. And so, some legal, and then, just trying to stay on top of artificial intelligence, and it's moving so quick, how do you, how do you make, how do you integrate it in at the same time of, to continue to do what you're supposed to do?
Alright, and, we don't have any open forums for tonight, so we will move right along to action items. We are going to be speaking with and interviewing the representatives that have applied for the PAO rec commission board. Tonight, we have Hannah January, I'm probably gonna mess up your names. Monica Andreason.
Andreason.
Andreason. And Quentin Garrison, right? Alright, so, the way this is gonna work is, we will ask you guys questions, and I will give you each the chance to answer the same question. And then, if the board has any other questions, after that, we can ask them. We just need to make sure that we ask each of them that same question, so they all have the opportunity to, to answer. So, first of all, thanks for coming in, we appreciate you applying and showing interest in being on the rec board. So, Hannah, I will start with you. The first question is, do you see any conflict of interest being on the rec board? And if so, how do you foresee handling those conflicts?
I mean, I've coached various different teams throughout the rec, and I get to play in the rec, so I'm sure there'll be quite a bit of conflict. So, I mean, I just think, so you know, having a conversation about it, and having some calm conversation about it, discussing it, making sure that everything's good, and, yeah.
Awesome, okay, Monica?
Yeah, along the same lines, my children also participate. I don't see it as a conflict as much as I would see that as an asset, but again, there is an issue of conflict. I would say, just needs to, needs to be addressed, but I think that that would only just be an asset to, to my experience with it.
Sure. Quentin?
Yeah, I don't see any conflict, like I said, being involved, having meetings like this, you know, discussing anything that brings up issues and such, having everybody aboard a team, and I think that's a big, big thing right there, so no conflict issues on that side.
Okay. Monica, do you have any experience with budget oversight?
I do. So, as, so both in college, on some of the different boards that I sat on, specific to the Panalimic Society, so we oversaw the recruitment of nearly seven hundred women each year, and so, I was part of that budget cycle as it pertained to the recruitment process. As well, I also co-owned my own business, a recruiting firm, executive recruiting firm for seven years. So, as a business owner, I've had to oversee my own budget from a startup business all the way through the different cycles.
Sure. Quentin, do you have any budget oversight experience?
Yes, I work for a large UPC contractor up in Overport, throughout the whole plan of a project. Budgets and quality are pretty much what I do, so, yeah, I did, I worked with budgets and just overall progress and such.
Okay, awesome.
Yes, I do as well, I own my own business here in town, and so I not only have to budget my own business, but dealing with, like, insurance companies and all of that as well with it, so that's a lot of fun. Not only that, but I also manage three competitive sports teams, and that's a lot of fun. Managing with, you know, at least ten players and all their parents and finances and paying for everything, and sure. So, yeah, I do that quite a bit.
Awesome. Quentin, how would you suggest prioritizing rolling out programs?
I'd say maybe like lack of interest, or just not much involvement. Push and push and push, but, you know, at the end of the day, come back to budget, we'll waste money on it, and, uh, if not much involvement, and, you know, let's find the next thing to deal with it, and just keep moving. So I said, no involvement, and find other, other options.
Sure. Okay, Hannah?
I'm, I would agree, but I think also give like more context as far as like, was, you know, did everyone know about it? I feel like that's a big thing, I see a lot, is, I think, the puzzle thing, in the very beginning, a lot of people were like, we're gonna know about that. So, definitely like that side of it, but then, you know, also, like, what is the interest with it? Who's showing up, what's the voting look like?
Yeah. Okay, Monica?
I would say communication and messaging. As part of my business, I also developed a roundtable for CFO professionals, and ultimately ended up recruiting over a hundred members to that. But learned that the, the communication, it wasn't necessarily like a lack of interest, but learning how to best reach people, so I do think that, at least I've seen sometimes some breakdown of communication here, even on a local level. For example, like, on Saturday, the Cottonwood PTO had Santa going on at Price Chopper, and then everybody figured out the rec commun- or the rec board also had Santa going on at the same time at the library, so I think just looking at communication from a whole and really getting our arms around better how to involve everyone in the community, and I think that starts from the central communication and the messages that are getting there.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Any questions from the board? Anything else?
I got one, which, who do we start with now that they've, this is harder?
I, no.
So I'll, I'll start with Quentin. So what do you, what do you got? What do you think is your role as far as support or assistance to the rec director?
For my role, really, I feel like it's one, working with everyone here, of what the expectation is with the rec and involvement with USD 368, and honestly, that's why I'm here also, to learn more about it. I wanna be involved, I wanna volunteer. There's limited positions in the rec, and financially, it don't make sense all across the board, so just being involved, being a face for something, and just part of being a fan of it someday, I think. So, this was an opportunity that I think would fit well.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that from your question?
Just, how, how do you think your interaction should be, would be supporting the rec director?
The rec director, yes. As far as the rec director, I think just anything, support, everything from, you know, coming up with new ideas, really being plugged in and involved in what's going on within the schools to kind of complement, and again, I think it's just bringing the whole community together. So, helping to truly be that liaison between what's going on with the school. So helping to truly be that liaison between what's going on with the school board and the schools, what's going on with the rec commission and how can we best, you know, work together with each other. But I think as far as, um, working with the director, uh, really just supporting anything that that, that person needs.
Um, I, yeah, with, with the ideas or anything that, that becomes a bit, that needs help, support and make sure that we can make it happen. Cause I mean, that's what his job is, is to do that too, but also providing, you know, ideas and brainstorming. And, um, I think I get like a pretty unique perspective from parents that get to come in and talk to me about their struggles with kids. And so I think I do get some ideas like that that I could present, um, potentially to help with the director, um, be able to like get that stuff going, things like that, but also the communication is something really important.
Okay. Any other questions? On the board?
I would like to nominate Quentin Garrison.
Okay, I have a motion for Quentin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Three, all those opposed? One, two, three, not voting?
I guess it'll be an opposed.
Okay, so three, four. Okay, so with that, um, we need a new motion for the rec commission board appointee.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion to nominate Hannah January to be in the rec for, the rec board to represent the school board.
Okay, we have a motion.
One question.
Yep.
I should have remembered the order of your names. I'm sorry about that. Hannah, which one?
Hannah, Monica.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for Hannah. Wait, is there a second? No second? Okay. So then we need a final motion?
Well, I would like to ask for a lack of a second, so.
Correct.
I mean, if we nominate Andrew.
Monica?
Monica, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Monica, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion for Monica. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
First and a second, all those in favor? Can I move again?
You, this was our motion.
All right. Five, all those opposed? Opposed two, five two, all right. Monica, thank you so much for, um, applying. You are our new representative for the rec commission. Thank you Hannah and Quentin for applying. We really appreciate you. And I encourage you to stick in it and, and stay, stay engaged for sure. Cause I think you can both bring light to it.
So what we've, we've done is I, we've already shared the applicants with Wes Joy because, um, there's this position, but then the, the rec commission has an at-large position that the rec board decides or votes on, so we've already shared your applications for that. Um, and then so tomorrow, I will actually reach out to, to Wes to let him know, uh, the, the, how this turned out. And then also, um, we'll make sure that he has that. So I'm assuming that you would have interest, both of you would have interest in that position as well. So I, I can't speak to how that, that would work. I imagine it's probably similar, but he would reach out to you.
All right. All right, moving along, we are at the point where we will be entering into executive session.
Madam President, I move that we go into executive session with?
It'd be just the board initially, and then usually the board will invite me and a partner group.
Board to discuss superintendent valuation pursuant to personnel matters of non-accepted personnel order to protect the privacy and interest of individuals to be discussed and that we return to open session in this room at?
I mean, I would say, I mean, at minimum thirty.
What do you?
Probably, cause we have to talk about, and then we have to have him in too, all of the same in that timeframe.
Okay, let's, let's say forty-five.
Seven nineteen?
Sure. We'll say seven twenty to round it out.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty, okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. We will return at seven twenty.
[S01]I'm going to do a little bit of a quick review of the new project. I think we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Any questions?
[S02]Okay.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the necessary resources. We need to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is to make sure that we have all the resources available for this project. So, let's say we have 100 people and we need to finalize the budget by Friday. Is that okay?
Okay, um, can I motion to extend executive session for 30 minutes?
Okay, motion.
Second.
Until so until 7:50.
Okay, motion second, all is in favor. Okay.
Is this with or without?
Is this with or without?
Make a motion to extend executive session with superintendent need to discuss personal matters. Uh, non-legal special for another ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
A second. First and second, all is in favor? Six oh. Okay. We will be back.
Six oh. Okay. We'll be back.
She's gone. You have to run the meeting. Okay. We move that we go into executive session with superintendent. Me to discuss admin.
And director contracts.
And director contracts. Uh, persons matters not like personal order to protect the privacy interests of individuals. To be discussed and that we return to open session in this room at eight sixteen? Eight fifteen?
Eight fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Six.
Are you ready?
No.
Okay.